Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. I know that there are those who are still coming and clearly we will acknowledge them as they come in. But we want to start our program. By the way, my name is Melvin Forbes. I'm the President and CEO of Consulting Associates and also privileged to serve as the Chairman of the United States Army Advisory Board. So I'm delighted to be here today and delighted that you're here for such a very, very important issue. Well, first, let's have Ms. Elder Brenda Allen comment off a prayer. And after that, we will have workable remarks from the President of this fine chapter of NAACP, Mr. Bob Ross. And then we will go from there.
Bless the Lord, everybody. Praise the Lord this morning. Amen. Won't you open up your mouths and say with me, "Bless the Lord"?
Bless the Lord!
Amen. And we ask that you would be now to touch somebody's hand as we pray. Oh, Father God, we come in the name of Jesus Christ. Because you are great and you are mighty. And because you are God, and besides you, there is none other. Father God, we come as your people this morning. Oh, God, according to your word, that if my people which are called by my name would humble themselves and pray and seek your face, oh, Father God, and turn from their wicked ways, oh, Father, you said that, oh, God, you would hear us and you would heal our land. Oh, Father God, in the name of the Lord Jesus, you are God of houses and land that sit upon a hill. So I know if you are God, we ought to be able to have our house. We ought to be able to sit in our own living room. We ought to be able to cook in our kitchen. The foreclosure should never come up, oh, Father God. Now you be glorified in this meeting. Thank you for the people that are always here, already here. Don't let them have bow down heads. But lift up your head, people. Lift up your heads on your gates. And be lifted up your blessing doors. And the King of glory shall come in. Come on, people of God. Begin to clap your two hands and tell them, "This is already done. This is already done in the name of Jesus."
Well, I don't know how you felt before, but you ought to feel a little bit better right now. Especially after such a fervent prayer coming from Elder Allen. Thank you so much and thank you for hosting us today. The home has always been the American dream. But it seems that the American dream has turned into a nightmare. And so for that reason, I would like to introduce to you the President, under his leadership, that started this movement. Someone who really needs no introduction. But would you give a round of applause for the President of Prince George's County, NAACP, Mr. Bob Ross?
Good morning, everybody. First of all, thank you for getting up early this morning, coming out. This is, work is done not by just the NAACP. As I reorganized and do a gradual movement, I have three words that I always say. Collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. Carmen of the Katie Abel Foundation, who really spearheaded this and became our Chair of our Housing Committee, came to me with this vision that we needed to do something about the foreclosure rate. And we researched and we looked, looked, she brought the data in. She's got other organizations to start believing. And that's why we are here today, a year later, looking at disparity in Prince George's County throughout the state of Maryland. Here today, and where we're starting, we're going to need your support. But this is a grassroots movement. I will say it again. It's going to take each and every one of you to get involved, to do what we have to do to get this done. And we got to raise your noise at the state level, at the local level. We're going to talk about that a little more. I'm not going to take too much time, but I appreciate you covering out. I would just offer a statement for the State, Gerald Stansburg, the State President. Gerald, I'll be saying a word because I know you got to go.
Come on, come on. Now what better place to be but in the church? What better place to discuss feeding the hungry and saving homes? What better place? I want to thank Carmen Johnson. I've talked to Carmen on numerous occasions and she's been a little nervous because she's taking on the Giants. But she can't take on the Giants alone, as President Bob Ross said. She can't look behind her and not see that she has followers willing to stand with her, beside her, in front of her. You are those people. We need to make sure that we are out front on this matter. Carmen is going to be calling on you for a whole lot of things. You got to be committed, you got to be dedicated, and you got to be consistent. You can't look to the side and say, "It's somebody else's job." You got to look at the side, look to yourself in the mirror and say, "It's my job. It is my job. It is my responsibility." You cannot leave her or Bob or me or any other leader that's standing up for you. Because we are the voice of the people. There are people out here that say the NAACP is not relevant. But here today, I see, based on this audience here, that the NAACP is more than relevant. Because you need a voice. And every last one of you have the gift. Look around you. Look around you. Look at your neighbor. We live in right now in communities, not even neighborhoods, I mean neighborhoods, not even communities anymore. Because we don't even know who live next door to us. All right? We don't feed each other. We don't serve each other. We don't help each other out. We got to go back to what we know. So I'm saying to you right now, this is what we got to do. If you're serious about why you're here, we can make the noise. We can make it happen. So I'm ahead for the 24 branches in the state of Maryland. We're going to do everything we can to do what we can to say, "Hey, Governor O'Malley, whoever's governor, we want this executive order in place. We want you to take concern in our citizens." If we can send people to the moon and get all these kind of different things from the moon and all these satellites and all this stuff, and here we right here on Earth, and we cannot solve this housing problem, something is wrong. Something is wrong. So now's the time. I'm not just talking, folks. I mean, I am going to walk the walk, not just talk the talk. And I'm hoping that you all are here today, not just to walk the walk, but to get out there and do what we need to do. Thank you very much. I really appreciate seeing you all on this day. Thank you so much. Carmen, thank you, darling. You are wonderful. I appreciate you.
Come on, let's give it up for our County and State President of NAACP. If you're going to solve the problems, don't be looking around at everybody else because we are the ones you've been looking for. Too many good people are being put out on the streets because the process are antiquated, outdated, and really, nobody seems to care. That's why I'm happy that the NAACP, along with its partners, because there are many partners in this coalition. And one such partner is with us today from the National Action Network, under the leadership of Mr. Al Reverend Al Sharpton. Would you give a round of applause to his President for the state of Maryland, Pastor Lydus Abregan?
Good morning, everyone. As Melvin said, I'm President for the Washington DC Chapter of National Action Network, headed by our leader and founder Reverend Al Sharpton. We are in a fight here. And Reverend Sharpton is supporting this fight. Reverend Sharpton was in a meeting with us recently and he said, "I don't want you to become Al Sharpton, but I want you to duplicate Al Sharpton's work in your community." And he wants us to be more visible and more prominent with issues that are related to our people. We will get it done together. So this meeting, while it was sponsored by some dear women who did all the hard work to make it happen, and Bob is leading us, you should know that the National Action Network is fully, not only behind you, but involved in this process. And that's why I'm here. And we are going to march. We're going to protest. We're going to, we're going to join the fight and we are going to make it happen. The reason you're here is because you're losing your house and we're here to help you. But I'm saying that you need to know that we need your help even before you get in trouble. And we're going to make this happen for you. In fact, when the second meeting after this one should be three times the amount of people at the Governor's office. We're going to get out there in the cold and stand there and let them know that we're not leaving till we get something done. The Governor was able to get a law passed for people to have marriages, whatever they can. And he can do that for us because we are more than that group and we are being affected and we want this to stop now. We need an executive order to produce a moratorium on the foreclosure process. And if you believe me, stand to your feet and let's say to the Governor, "We are ending this today. It must stop right now."
And may the church say amen. I have noted in my short period of life that there are two people. Won't you give a microphone to? And both of them start with Ps. The pastor and the politician. But that's okay, though. Especially when they are appealing and they're saying something that not only is factual, but is relevant, and both are here today. So listen, what he has said is we've got to be proactive versus reactive. If it's going to stop, it's got to stop right now, not another day, but right now. And the people have the power to make it happen. We have coming up now to this podium such a person who was the one who brought this to the NAACP through the Katie Abel Foundation and says, "Something is not right." I want to bring one other young lady up prior to bringing up Ms. Johnson because she is the Chairman of the Black Caucus for the state of Maryland. Ms. Ayesha Brave Boy.
It is an honor to be here today. And as Chair of the Legislative Black Caucus, I must apologize because I have to go to Baltimore today because there are people who are suffering from disparities and racial discrimination there. And I have to go and speak with them later this morning. So I do apologize for having to leave, but I wanted to say this before I left. There is an unfortunate practice that goes on with many of our banks that really are artificially decreasing and stripping equity out of your properties. People have historically been able to borrow against the equity in their homes to send their children to school. They've been able to borrow against the equity in their homes to acquire businesses or to build a business. But when you don't have that wealth and you don't have that equity, you don't have that type of economic independence and freedom. So we have to care about our neighbors. So we are all in this together. This is about maintaining and building wealth, not just in the rich area of town, but in every area of town in the state of Maryland. And I stand with you, Bob Ross and Gerald Stansburg and all of the wonderful partners we have here today. We've got a lot of work to do. One of the things I know that we're asking for, a moratorium. But I also suggest, and we'll be leading this effort as well behalf of the Legislative Black Caucus, an investigation into the marketing and the sales practices of all of the major banks in our community. Because we have to hold them accountable for maintaining homes in Rockville and Bethesda. Homes in District Heights and in Forestville and Fort Washington should get the same type of treatment. And we must do that investigation. So we look forward to working with you, not only on the moratorium issues, the issue of a moratorium, but specifically on the issue of an investigation into the practices for bank-owned properties. And I thank you so much for having me here today.
Now, we all know that we have relatives and friends who may work in banks. So we're not suggesting that the banks are fraudulently doing stuff. We're just suggesting maybe the process that they have is outdated and needs to be revamped. Because I wouldn't be so accusatory to believe that they would do something illegal. Would you? I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I don't... Okay, okay. Well, I... I forgot, and please forgive me, to acknowledge or at least give an opportunity for you all to see all of the elected officials that are here today because all of them were sent invitations to be here. Everybody from the Governor's office or the Governor that is here, would you please stand? Okay, the Lieutenant Governor's office. Is anyone here from the Lieutenant Governor's office? Would you please stand? Let's see. Okay. They probably on their way. I'm just saying. Well, now, we got email, Twitter, Facebook, and I think they'll send that all. They said they sent out all. They did the phone calls. And in some places, they said, "Carry up pigeons and smoke singles." So I, I think they did it all.
Who did it all?
The President said he did it all. Okay, well, let me, you know, let me just keep going down the line. Anyone here from the Controller's office? Okay, okay. I'm sorry. All right. Let me, let me move on because I can't believe you all voted for him.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning. I'm Kim Williams. I'm Special Assistant in the Office of the Council Administrator, Bobby Williams. I'm here on behalf of Councilwoman Harrison, as well as Councilmember Obie Patterson.
All right, all right. Well, that's wonderful. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, you get recognized. I was under the impression that some of y'all didn't care, some of them didn't care, but I knew that. I, you know, I just knew, okay? Maybe I wasn't plain in my delivery of how it's asked and I apologize.
You were plain enough.
Was I? Okay. I do see some other candidates that are here. Would you recognize who you are, sir, and who you are in the corner, my glasses? I don't have my glasses on.
I'm a candidate for State Delegate in the Legislative 25th District.
All right, Mr. Barnes, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to be recognized? There are some other people that we'll probably be calling up later than every month, but let's move on with the program. Would you also give a warm round of applause for the one who is the grassroots person that really got this movement, Ms. Carmen R. Johnson from the NAACP, Chairman of the Housing Committee?
First, I would like to thank Jericho Church for letting us have our Town Hall meeting here. Then I would like to thank all the media outlets for allowing the information to be aired for our community on this huge issue in the state of Maryland. I would like to also thank all of our supporters and staying with us on this important issue that our families here in Maryland are facing. It really means a lot. The NAACP Housing Committee has been meeting for months regarding foreclosures in Maryland. In September, CNN News reported Maryland was up 275%, the highest in the nation. Bank repossession was up 101% in Maryland. We are organizing the people of Maryland for a protest movement against lender fraud with foreclosing on homes. We're seeking an executive order for a moratorium on foreclosures from our Governor and all elected officials to freeze all foreclosures in Maryland. It has been, become clear that servicers use questionable tactics to illegally remove people from their homes. And these tactics should be addressed. It has also been brought to my attention just recently that families and veterans are living in the woods. How could this be in our state? If these foreclosures continue, we will see more families in the woods living. Something is out of line. Something is not right. We have heard countless stories from homeowners on how they could not get anyone to listen to them. At this point, they don't trust the banks, they don't trust the servicers, or they don't trust the elected officials. We believe banks should be made to reveal to every homeowner in foreclosure the criteria to qualify for a modification. We need a gatekeeper from the grassroots overseer. The NAACP is requesting to take this task on. We are asking our Governor to do the moral thing and sign an executive order for a moratorium for all foreclosures in the state of Maryland until a dialogue, a language, some communication has taken place with the Governor, our Attorney General, the Comptroller of Maryland, and all other elected officials with the homeowners and voters of Maryland. If we don't stand up for righteous, stand up for justice, and stand up for truth, our communities will continue to be torn apart. If Dr. Martin Luther King was here today and I would sit and talk to him, I would say, "Dr. King, 50 years later, we're trying to continue a movement. This is about holding on to the American dream." If Dr. King was here today, I believe he would say, "Homeowners, you have my blueprint." I believe Dr. King would say that that power would make a way out of no way. You will have to discover that religion has to become real to you and you have to know God for yourself. You need to pray a prayer out loud. Dr. King said, "You will hear a small voice saying to, 'Stand up for righteous, stand up for justice, stand up for truth, and know the Lord will be with you until the end of the world.'" Sometime we may feel discouraged, feel our work is in vain. We may feel discouraged even from the people that look like us. But then the Holy Spirit will revise our souls again. There is a bombing lead to make the wounded whole. There is a power enough in heaven to cure a sin-sick soul. Freeze all foreclosures now in the state of Maryland and help us save our homes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And I know we all feel that one. Now, we're going to move briefly because now you're going to actually hear from those of you, "Who are you?" Some of the community people that are actually going and have actually gone through a process that you need to hear about. We're going to start first with Community Speaker, Mr. William Thomas, followed by Ms. Patrice Cook Johnson. In that order, please come.
My name is William Thomas. As a housing counselor, I see a lot of homeowners who are facing foreclosure. And I can assure you that Prince George's County, the number of people who are facing foreclosure is growing. One of the first questions a family will ask us, who else on the verge of losing their home, is, "How long do I have? How long can I remain in my home?" After losing their homes, families find it difficult to rent. They find it difficult to improve their job situation because of what a foreclosure does to their credit. But there are also documented cases of families moving into homeless shelters to the point where shelters are booked beyond capacity. And we are now addressing the needs of men and women who are living in their cars and they are living in the woods behind busy intersections and a lot of shopping centers that you go to on a daily basis. So the residents of Prince George's County, we're concerned about the hopelessness of homeowners facing foreclosure. We're concerned about the lack of communication banks have with homeowners facing foreclosure. We're concerned about the way banks work with housing counseling agencies. We're concerned about the bank's questionable practices of constantly losing paperwork, of consistently changing loss mitigation case managers, of regularly selling mortgages just after modifications are issued, of routinely not honoring agreements of mortgages just purchased. Unfair modifications. We're concerned about the bank's right to foreclose without proper documentation. We're concerned about the state and county using funds to place new homeowners in a foreclosed home rather than stabilizing the situation with current homeowners.
Awesome.
We're concerned about the state and county's perception that they are unable or unwilling to hold lending institutions that do business in our neighborhoods to a fair and ethical standard that looks out for our best interest. But we're mostly concerned about the fate of our hard-working, tax-paying, voter-registered, family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who are facing the possibility of losing their homes. So the need to issue an executive order for a moratorium on foreclosures is overdue and greatly needed.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Patrice Johnson and I've been trying to resolve the matter with the bank since 2007 and 2008. My loan was sold to Chase, JP Morgan Chase. I kept calling my original lender. They told me that I couldn't, I could no longer make any payments to them, that all the payments had to be made to Chase at this point. So I called the original lender and I called JP Morgan Chase for two or three months and no one would accept my payments. And September of 2008, I started getting phone calls from JP Morgan Chase and they were advising me that my loan was in default and they were going to foreclose on my home. I filed bankruptcy to save my home. And Chase still came in and they asked that the bank lift the bankruptcy so they could continue with the foreclosure. The judge would not let them lift the stay because they filed the affidavit out and the court stated that they were the note holders and when they got to bankruptcy court, they could not produce the note. Chase put me in a HAP program. I think I spent about $10,000 paying their program and they sold that loan to another lender and another lender and another lender. So now my loan is with a subservicer by the name of Nationstar. I wrote again, letter after letter after letter to Nationstar and to the original lender because that's who they were subservicing for five years later. Nationstar continuously sent fraudulent documents to every single agency and to myself. And they kind of changed the tune maybe six months later, saying that they do not own the note, that the original lender owned the note. But Nationstar filed foreclosure proceedings on my home in July of this year. I can't find anybody to help me. I've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in attorney fees. And when I spoke to Hope about it, because Nationstar called, started calling me, threatening me with foreclosure because they had me, they wanted me to sign a modification, but it was filled with balloon payments and they charged me $95,000 in late fees and penalties. Now, if you have a bank saying, "We don't have a law affidavit. We don't own the note, but we still want to foreclose on your property," who do you get to help you at that point?
NAACP. NAACP. Something just ain't right. There's something just ain't quite right in this whole process. But let's keep hearing from some other folk and then we're going to get to some real good stuff, okay? Ms. Tammy Kelly and Ms. Scarlett Davis, would you please come at this time?
Not Mr. Schomburg. I'm Tammy Kelly. Schomburg, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Mel. You know, I just want to say thank you guys and especially to Carmen for inviting us to come and share our story. My pride is gone, so I will publicly speak about my story. So my husband, who's here, and I both grew up in Prince George's County. And, uh, and we were blessed by the grace of God to find each other. We have five children. And, uh, and we're paying for those children, but we were, we had our first house over in College Park. We put $170,000 down on that home. And we negotiated a 15% decrease in value. So we're sitting in our home, proud. So we're sitting in our home, proud as we could be, patting ourselves on the back. We have $300,000 in equity, and we can afford our home. We can still, to this day, afford our home. Our home, after, I guess, a couple earthquakes and bad things, the roof started falling apart, and it started raining in our house. The house, the furnaces stopped working, and the water was coming in, black mold was starting to grow all over the place. And we had a choice. We had $10,000 left, but we had about $50,000 in repairs that were needed. Had never even been late in 15 years of homeownership, never even been late on a mortgage payment. And I called the bank, and I said, "I know that we're eligible for a one-time deferment. Can you give us a little bit of help until the economy picks up?" And the bank said, "No, no, 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 you can't have a deferment. You gotta apply for a modification first, and then you can apply for a deferment." And I said, "But a deferment would be the best option for us, because we can afford our house." He said, "You have to miss a payment to be able to do it. You have to miss three." That's right, you have to miss three payments. And I said, "I've never even been late on one payment in 15 years. I can't miss three payments. Our credit will be just killed, and we have great credit." Talked to my husband, and, and we prayed, and we said, "You know what? We have to do it. What choice do we have? They won't let us have a deferment?" I was about to give up and walk away. Carmen said, "You gotta let me help you." I said, "Carmen, I gotta do this on my own, because everybody in the state of Maryland doesn't have a Carmen." Long story short, I got so frustrated, I finally reached out to Carmen. I said, "All right, Carmen, I have you in my life, you're a blessing, you do this for me." Once Carmen threw her weight behind it, we started seeing some behavior changes. Bank of America called, "We're working on this. We're so sorry, we don't know what happened. That agreement, we don't know why that got denied. You guys should've been approved. You guys have been paying, I don't know what's going on. I was told yesterday that the agreement is gonna happen." And I didn't know whether to be happy or sad, because the only reason I'm gonna get to save my home, if I do, is because Carmen stepped in. I would not believe the injustices that are happening, except I'm going through it. I was living the American dream, I was a responsible American like we were told to be. We did everything right, and I can't believe where I find myself. And this is an issue that I'm so thankful that the NAACP sees, and if it's happening to people like me, it is happening in the minority communities 10 times worse. I wanna reiterate, Ayesha, brave voice, by the way. Ayesha doesn't even know how, what a godsend she is. I see people in Baltimore City that, I am not kidding, their homes are worth like $10,000 now. Do you know what's happening to those homes? People from other countries are buying portfolios, buying portfolios, life savings. People are losing their homes, and predators and vultures are coming in, buying them up, and making money by putting renters in there. And it makes me sick every day to hear the stories and to see what's going on. And I just wanna...
Well, we're gonna stop it.
My name is Scarlett Davis. I own a home in Laurel, Maryland, the Howard County side of Maryland. Four years ago, we really hit rock bottom, and we called Bank of America and told them, "Listen, we're really tied on money." Unfortunately, we hit a place where we really didn't want to hit. We called the bank, and we said, "Listen, we are going to be late on our payments. We cannot be late." They said, "You are not in financial hardship. Your payments are on time, there's nothing we can do for you." We were forced to file bankruptcy. We fell behind, and we were granted this bankruptcy. And we made our payments according to bankruptcy, and we've been making our payments. In 2011 is when we were granted this bankruptcy. We still have to pay all our debt, it's just a reduced amount. But we were able to keep our home, and that's the reason why we filed. We sacrificed an 800 credit score to keep our home. So we're paying. In August of this year, I received a letter from a mortgage, a foreclosure bond company. I didn't know what that was. I had to look it up in Google. I thought it was a foreclosure bond company. They were offering me $25,000 to save my home. I freaked out. I called the bank, and I said, "I don't know what this is for." They said, "You have to call the attorney's office." I said, "I am an attorney?" "Yes, you have to call the foreclosure, foreclosure attorney." By this time, after Bank of America did all this thing, the loan was sold to Wells Fargo. So Wells Fargo has been handling our case now for the last three years. So I called the attorney's office, and they said, "Ma'am, you are behind 19 payments, but I do see here that they are withholding $32,000 of your money in the holding account." I said, "Can't you apply that money?" They said, "No, they can't." "In order for us to apply that money, you have to pay us the payout amount of $11,316.58." I said, "Sir, I don't have that money. Call the bank, they should be able to give you a modification." Fabulous. I called the bank, and I asked them for a modification, and they said, "Well, you are not in bankruptcy." I said, "Yes, I am. I have been in bankruptcy since 2011." Come to find out, the bankruptcy miraculously somehow, I don't know, got closed, and according to Wells Fargo, I'm not in bankruptcy, but yet I'm losing my home. So that merry-go-round continued. I submitted paperwork after paperwork. I had to write letters upon letters, and Tammy is my witness, of letters that I have written to explain, pasted this, this part of the paste-up. You know exactly what I'm talking about. Every letter you can think of, I have written. So here we are. I have a looming date over my head of December 6th, where my home will be foreclosed on. I want someone to help me get off this ride. I want someone to help us get off this nausea ride.
And now you see what we up against. This is a major problem. That's why, when people say that grassroots organizing is not important, it is important.
Yes, sir.
It is important.
Yes, sir.
And that's why, after you guys heard, these stories today need to get involved and create this movement that needs to take place here in the state of Maryland. And we all need to start collaborating here in the audience.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
I see one of our candidates that just walked in that is running with, one of our candidates that's running for governor, Mrs. Jolene Ivy. Would you like to come, Mrs. Ivy, and address us, and then Mr. Charles Lala? I see you in the back, sir. We'd like to have you come, and also have remarks.
Thank you so much, Carmen. I saw you on TV last night, you were fantastic. So thank you for being such a great advocate for this issue. Thank you all for putting this on. It's a huge issue, and it affects people in Prince George's County more than anyone else. And for some reason, foreclosures are going up in Maryland and down other places. So I, I feel like we should take this kinda personally. It's taking wealth away from Prince George's County residents and transferring it to I-don't-know-who, but it doesn't make any sense. It really seems to me that it would be in the bank's best interest to work things out with people. I don't know how it benefits them to have a house sitting on the market, decaying. I don't understand it. I've got one across the street from me right now, and I really feel for that family that had to move out. And the, the stories that we've heard here today show that there, there doesn't seem to be the will of the banks to actually come to a real solution. They seem to just wanna give everybody the runaround till you exhaust yourself, then they can take your house, and I don't, I don't get it. It doesn't make sense to me. But I stand here with you, I wanna do all we can to preserve the wealth that you have and not transfer it back to the bank or to anybody else. Because when people own their own homes, they're a much stronger part of the community, and that's really important. So thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you so very, very much. Mr. Lala, if you wanna come, you can come now. And Mr. Coats, where are you? If you're here, raise your hand, or... Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, okay. Mr. Coats, would you like to have words now, or Mr. Lala, either one? Both of these are people who are running for office, governor's office, lieutenant governor's office, so we wanna take a good look at them. And so when it's time for us to go to the polls to support getting off this merry-go-round, we'll know who we putting in office, because we have forgotten who they work for. They work for you all. We don't work for them. I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop. Mr. Charles Lala.
Wow. I tell you what, when, when, when we were first looking at this issue, and I was getting a brief one, getting my, my head and my arms wrapped around, that I can honestly tell you, it wasn't something foreign to me, because I dealt with the same situation personally. Homeowner, homeownership should not be a partisan or political issue. It's about building strong families and strong homes, and every time I hear someone talk about the issues in my community, the first question I wanna ask them is, "Are you part of the problem, or are you part of the solution?" Because see, it's easy to throw stones and talk out of both sides of your mouth. I think we've heard that earlier, that we ought to be warned not to do that. Now, he made some announcements earlier, from the beginning, the onset, the moderator did, and asked a couple questions. Well, who is here from the governor's office? Who is here from the attorney general's office? I think those questions are relevant, because when I started calling to get some support, I could not get any support on this issue from those offices. I think that's important. But I started connecting the dots, and I noticed something. Yes, Prince George's County, Maryland, one of the highest rates of foreclosure, not just in Maryland, but in the country. Maryland did not make the cut of the top 18 states to get provided support for foreclosure and homeownership. And when you look at it, the first thing I hear all the time, regardless of party affiliation, is, "Well, Charles, if you would pay your bill, there wouldn't be a problem." And that's something. So I'm the blame for a foreclosure mess that started when we began to bail out banks and mortgage companies, but no one bailed us out. But here's what's even more interesting. The more they can keep people separate and not talking, the more they can run, run shot over us and think we can hold each other accountable for what they're doing that's I'm against injustice, and I will absolutely stand for you now. Please understand something. I didn't send anyone from my office here, I came myself. I came myself. I didn't need anybody to speak to you on my behalf. And when we began to put this thing together and plan this thing, I arrived myself. I recognize that this organization, Carmen Johnson and many others are fighting together, but I want you to know something. We're in this together. The days of them keeping us separated are over. We're gonna come together, and we're gonna make this important. And just in case you wanna know how important something is to someone, just find out who shows up. Thank you all so very much. My prayers are with you. And one more thing, one more thing. On behalf of my family and myself, as a marine officer and a businessman, if I'm fortunate enough to serve you, and the highest capacity officer in the state is your governor, there will be a moratorium. I will stand with you, and we'll get this to going in the right direction. Thank you very much. My name is Reverend Delman Coats. I'm the senior pastor of the Mount Enan Baptist Church in Clinton, Maryland, and I announced this Wednesday that I am a candidate for lieutenant governor of the state of Maryland, and my running mate is Delegate Heather, Heather Mazzia. This is the number, this is perhaps the number-one issue that ought to confront everyone in our communities, the business community, and all of our elected officials. It is a moral injustice for us to have bailed out the banks, allowed them to stay in their homes, and then we are not able to stay in our homes. This is the number-one issue that, that is confronting us, and the, the reason we are in this situation is that with all of the settlements that have taken place with the banks, the focus has been upon loan origination. It is the securitization issue that has caused, that is amplifying this problem and creating a condition in which people are finding themselves on this Ferris wheel, this merry-go-round, as we've just heard today. And so we must link arms together, regardless of county, regardless of race and ethnicity, to come together to keep people in their homes. Because this issue is not gonna change if you have elected officials who are not ultimately accountable to the people. Join Carmen Johnson in order for this to improve, so that we can keep every person, every resident of the state of Maryland in their homes. I think the moratorium campaign here is a great one. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you, gentlemen. I understand that Ms. Keisha Brown is here from the state's attorney office. Would you like to come and, and address us, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I'm not prepared to speak, but I do wanna say thank you very much to the NAACP, both the state conference and the local chapter, and Ms. Johnson. This is a very serious issue, and Attorney General Doug Gansler takes this issue very seriously. And we have developed a separate mortgage, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have developed a separate mortgage enforcement unit to look into these issues. I know that the issue is very big, that there are many different agencies around the state that are supposed to do their part. The banks are supposed to do their part, right? And we know that everybody doesn't fulfill their part. But we do wanna let you know that we were here, right? The attorney general made it a purpose to make sure that people from the office who do this type of work are here to listen and learn and be able to help strategize on how we move this thing forward. So we look forward to working sincerely with the NAACP on this issue moving forward, so that both government, nonprofits, the people can join forces and do what's right for Maryland. You know, we're not miracle makers, but we are hardworking. We do wanna make sure that we hold the banks responsible. We've been able to develop relationships with especially the large, the five large banks, and be able to speak directly with them on your behalf in cases if need be. And so I just welcome for those, especially those who came up, the people who were very brave and strong to come up and get their story, which I thought was very important. And we were back there kind of talking about how we can do more and how we can pull on the resources, not only at the attorney general's office, but those offices that didn't show up here today that should be here. And so they're here, if you wanna be able to at least chat with them, I've got cards, and we'll be able to just, you know, touch one-on-one, and hopefully be able to refer people, work with people, and just do the best that we can.
Ms. Brown, I'm so glad you spoke. Ms. Brown and Ms. Lucy Carwell, we do a lot of work together, but I just wanna let everybody know that at this point, out of all due respect, we are tired of talking, we're tired of you guys putting groups together and all kinds of things, and all that. At this point, we are asking, we are demanding, Keisha, we are demanding for a moratorium. If you can let our attorney general know that we are demanding for a moratorium. And if any move is in here from the governor's office, we are coming. We are going to get a moratorium. We don't want no more families, we don't want no more talking, we don't want no more asking, begging, nothing. We want a moratorium. Our people, black and white, Keisha, Mary, we want a moratorium. I don't want no more families kicked out in the street. Christmas is coming. I don't want, I'm sick of families calling me, telling me that they are getting put out. I'm tired of calling the judges' chambers to get homes from being sold on the courthouse steps. I'm sick of it. We want a moratorium. We want a moratorium. We want a moratorium. That's what we want. No more talking.
Listen, let me just say this. It is clear that all that you have heard can be happening to any of us, regardless of our financial status, regardless to who important we think we are. This is real life happening to real people. You're talking about reality TV, here it is. You're talking about reality TV, here it is. Right? This is reality. And I think it's time that we stop, as Ms. Johnson said, all the talking, and get folk to be accountable who we elected. If you can, with all of the technology that we have in place, with a keystroke, get all the information in seven seconds about my life, you can do a moratorium tomorrow if you want to. If you want to. Okay? I understand that we have a political system. I understand we have a banking system. By the way, we need all of that. Because the largest room in the world is the room for improvement. So, we're saying that, listen, we understand the room we're in, but however, we've got to improve the room we're in. The 20th century solutions will not help us in the 21st century. Okay? We have moved beyond that. And many of us know that our homes were our 401Ks. We don't need no more pensions and 401Ks that the companies used to have when I was at MCI and NASA Space Center. Those days are over. The only thing we have left that is of equity and value that we can pass on to our children that you did for 20, 30 years is our home. Stop the talking, start the walking. Is Mr. Robert J. Strupp here from DNI? Okay. Come, put this on.
Thank you very much. My name is Robert Strupp. I'm the executive director of an organization known as Baltimore Neighborhoods, Inc., but we call ourselves today DNI, because we were founded in Baltimore in 1959, 55 years ago, to promote integration of housing in Baltimore. But that, and that was 10 years before the Fair Housing Act, the federal Fair Housing Act. We've heard some things today that are kind of scary, and I also think we've heard some things that have been rather inspiring. I'm going to share some numbers with you, some numbers that may be scary, but the faces we've seen that go with those numbers, hopefully, will move you and you'll understand why it's so important that we're here to get together and why it's important that we work together. What I'm going to talk about is largely related to where people live and where people are being helped and where they're not being helped. The other thing I wanted to say is, we've heard these stories of people who have struggled with their lenders, and Carmen has been doing such a phenomenal job to help as many people as she can. But I also want to remind you that there are some other organizations out there that are legitimate organizations, because there's also a lot of scammers out there. And the scammers are predators, and they're looking for people who are in trouble, prey on them, and take their homes. And we don't want them to take their homes, and we don't want the banks to take your homes.
And their money.
And your money. Thank you very much. But there's a settlement, bank settlement, that occurred with five of the nation's top five banks. It was one of the first bank settlements, and it was organized through the attorney general's offices around the country. What was disturbing to me from the very beginning of this was that these institutions were not obligated to share where the help was going, in what communities this relief was actually going to occur. All they did was report it on a statewide level. So, you really didn't know if something was going to be happening in Tacoma Park, or Rock Creek Park, or Langley Park, or Bethesda, or Baltimore, or Annapolis. We had no way of knowing. All we knew is that these five banks and all the other banks that participated in these various settlements were doing so many millions of dollars of different things, principal reduction, loan modification, short sales, and a lot of those. No records were given as to where those things were happening at the local level. So, that disturbed me. So, I started looking at that, and imagined my shock when I discovered that the top 10 zip codes for complaints in the state of Maryland, in the whole state, the top 10 zip codes for complaints on mortgage issues came from Prince George's County.
Wow.
They're all zip codes, they're all areas where people of color live, in large number, larger than the proportions to the population otherwise. So, I was very concerned that people are complaining to the bureau who are living in communities of color. We've heard how bad this problem is in Maryland, how Maryland is worse than the rest of the country, how Prince George's County is particularly bad, and so, I just want to share the, a report that the State Department of Housing and Community Development reports quarterly on what's happening with foreclosures in the state of Maryland. Foreclosure events in the United States fell by 6.9% in the third quarter of 2013. Foreclosures in Maryland increased by 5.7%. The increase in Maryland foreclosures worsened Maryland's national foreclosure ranking from fifth worst to third worst. Prince George's County had 2,019 foreclosure filings in the third quarter. That's a 32% increase over the previous quarter. Prince George's County had 875 default notices in the third quarter. Finally figured out how to hold this right. An increase of 130% over quarter one, and a 50% increase over a year ago. Foreclosure sales in Prince George's County in the third quarter of 2013 were up by 26.5% to 1,019 foreclosure sales. That's over 300 a month. 300 people a month being foreclosed on in Prince George's County. Over that. The number of lender purchases fell by 29%, but are up quarter to quarter, from third quarter to second quarter, but up 56% over last year. Last year, approximately one-third of all county home purchases were investors. Somebody called them vultures.
That's right.
Okay? So, if the lender purchases are down and the investor purchases are up, there are more vultures, less homeowners owning these homes. The top 10 communities, the top 10 communities statewide with the highest number of foreclosures include four communities in Prince George's County. They are Capitol Heights with a zip code of 20743, Temple Hills with a zip code of 20748, Upper Marlboro with a 20772 and 20774. All four of those zip codes are on that top 10 list statewide in Maryland who are people complaining to the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. We know there's a problem. Here's the data that shows it's a problem. The data can be boring, the data can blow you away, but the stories from the people we've heard up before me are the faces and the voices for these numbers. So, please help us, and please help yourselves, because these people who are here today, Carmen's group, other housing counseling agencies, and the attorney's general's office, are people, and Baltimore Neighborhoods, Inc., are people here who can help you, and we need your help as well. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you very much. We are at the mercy of Jericho Praise. You all understand we're in somebody else's house? But we're happy that they allowed us to be here now. We do have two more speakers that we have to hear from, and they have allowed us to do this. And after these two speakers, we're going to close, okay? But, so, just two more speakers. Kenya, would you come? And then, of course, Ms. Johnson, would you come? That's all.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kenya Sherd. I'm the vice chairperson of the housing committee, and I just want to talk a little bit about the trends that we've been seeing, things that people have been doing to help save their homes from foreclosure. Most of these homeowners are not behind on their other financial obligations. Quite a few don't even have credit card debt, so the idea that they are all irresponsible is a gross misconception. There is definitely something wrong when the only reason a family is forced to file bankruptcy is because the servicer keeps losing documents. Avoiding default is in both sides' interest, and it might be expected that they would voluntarily renegotiate many mortgage contracts, but very few renegotiations, renegotiations are actually happening. So, when you're applying for these modifications and you're talking to your servicer and you think that they're the ones that are going to help you and work for you and do the best they can for you, well, you're not getting the whole story. This is what you don't really know. Now, let's talk about your servicer. The next time you receive a denial letter, remember this: All mortgage securities have a servicer. That's your Nationstar, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Ocwen, that's just to name a few. The servicer collects the mortgage payments and represents the owner of the security in renegotiations. They don't represent you. They represent the owner of the security in the renegotiations. But the contracts between the security owners and the servicers actually discourage renegotiation. One problem is that servicers are compensated for their cost of foreclosing. The servicers are compensated for their cost of foreclosing, but they are not compensated for cost of renegotiating. So, what do you think that means for you? Another is that servicers impose fees when debtors pay late or default, and servicing contracts allow them to keep these fees. The underlying material issues are the securitization and the contracts between the security owners and the servicers. And until someone addresses these material issues, we will continue to get the same ambiguous excuses from servicers, and we will continue to see homeowners forced into bankruptcy and its aftermath. This is yet another reason we need to have a moratorium on foreclosures in Maryland.
All right. Now, listen, there is, we have been not bashing or accusing, we've just been presenting facts, wouldn't you say?
Facts are facts.
Okay? Mr. Maxwell Corn, give him a round of applause. He's an attorney.
Thank you all very much. We've got to keep it short and sweet, so I'm going to cut to the chase. I am facing foreclosure. So, I feel your pain. I have some solutions, and there is light at the end of the tunnel. Like I say, cutting to the chase, I'm up counsel to a large law firm, and they specialize in taking on the lenders. You know, the lenders try to make it seem like this is like a you problem, like you screwed up. It's not a lender problem, we all know that. They don't do anything wrong. But you know what? It's an us problem. It is, it's all of us. You know, the downturn in the real estate market, the ridiculous loans, the predatory lending, all the shenanigans they get the agent. So, we're all in this together. Maryland is one of 22, 28 states that has what's known as nonjudicial sale. So, they just invoke the power of sale, they docket the suit, they send you those scary letters that we've all gotten, and from that point on, there's really no stopping the train. There's some things we can do to slow it down, but unfortunately, to stop a foreclosure sale, it's very limited what you can do. Why should a contract case, or just a regular civil lawsuit, or even a criminal case, why should you be allowed to pray a jury trial, but you can't in a foreclosure case? Why can't you appeal an adverse decision? The only, once the sale occurs, you know what you're allowed to take issue with? How they conducted the sale. And by and large, I don't think anyone's here is having issues how the sales are conducted. It's all, everything leading up to it. So, we're kind of toothless right now. We plan on mounting a mass court suit against all the lenders. We will challenge things like if the broker falsified your income, hit fees, you weren't given a copy of the HUD, you were lied to to seize, if they messed with you, they appraised value of your home. But I got to run. But please sign the sheet back there, and it's been a pleasure. And let us help you. I think we can do some damage, and we're going to do our damage in Baltimore.
Thank you so very much. Listen, we know people have a lot to do on Saturday. There is a gentleman here from George Washington University, Mr. Gregory Skorls. Come, just introduce yourself. And we apologize, but we're in somebody else's house. You know what I mean?
I know the hook is coming in five minutes. But let me ask you, does the name David Koch mean anything to anybody in this room? David Koch is a businessman, he's a philanthropist. He also gives millions of dollars to righting political causes, and has probably done more damage than a businessman has done in the history of this country. I think this tells us something about who gets what and why in our country. And I think the message here is, we need to be organized to take what ought to be coming to us.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm a sociologist, and I always have to give numbers, and I'm not going to do it today because of the time. But the federal government has not solved this problem, it's not going to solve this problem. States and cities are taking on more and more of the obligation here, and there's some very creative things that are happening at the state and local level. There are some states that are looking at creating state-owned banks. The Bank of North Dakota, since 1919, has been financing student loans, farmers, and other businesses profitably consistently every year through the financial crisis. Another thing that's being done at state and local levels is a moratorium on foreclosures. This is something that some of you have heard about. This is important for several reasons. A moratorium allows some homeowners to get their finances in order. It allows some banks, if they clearly hold the note, it gives them an incentive to actually refinance. Most importantly, it gives investigative agencies more time to find and prosecute the fraud that put people into the positions that they're in.
That's right.
It's not just the services, it's the appraisers, it's the originators, it's everybody. Now, you're going to hear that a foreclosure is a bad idea because it's going to increase the cost of credit, it's going to make it more expensive. This is the cry you hear every time anybody has ever proposed any kind of rule on any business. So, what I would like to suggest is, there are no magic bullets here. But I would argue, in conclusion, that there are several steps that can be taken. There's a $13 billion settlement with JP Morgan that we've heard a lot about in the last few weeks, that may or may not, actually, there was a headline today, they reached a $4 billion settlement on another charge. We'd like to see more of this. More effective organizing at the local level. I think if there is one single action that needs to be taken, it would be that. A moratorium with a stroke of a pen could resolve many of the problems that we're looking at. But the message I would leave you with is, this problem is not going to solve itself. This problem is not going to solve itself. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and I know you all appreciate that information. Now, let me just say this. What we want you to do is contact the NAACP office, stay involved, so that we can make this happen together. Because it's about standing together. So, with that, Mrs. Johnson now is going to come. She's our last speaker to tell us how we go from here. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, I'm going to be brief, but everyone's been saying we've got to work together, and we really do. And this is our call to action, because oftentimes, people say, okay, well, what's next? You've got to be, you've said all these things, but what are we going to do next? We've got attorneys back there to help you, and then we have a website, and I think most of you have gotten this step one, two, three. Look at it. This is what we need you to do. We need you to come and join our committees. We've got committees that are going to be watching out, our legislators, we've got committees that are going to be watching out our judges, and if they don't do the right things, we're going to out them on our, we're going to out them on Twitter, Facebook, Twitter, whatever there is, to let people know that they are not working for you. If they're not working for you, they're working against you. So, I please, I beg you, go to our website, it's on here, www.marylandvotersagainstforeclosure.org, sign up for a committee, someone will be getting in touch with you, so that you can see what you can do to save your homes. Without that, we're not together. So, you got to get together and join these committees. Au revoir.
Our closing prayer about our host elder, Alan, would you all please stand as we begin?
It has been a pleasure for all of you all to be here. I have something to do that's a little bit unorthodox. I know you got to go by Walmart and a whole lot of stores, but it's a little bit unorthodox I'm about to have you do. But this is my house, and you have been invited to my house, and to send you all without a blessing would be most dreadful. So, in a few seconds, you see that say, "We shall not be moved," and then it says something about a march. We're going to take our first march into the sanctuary, and when we take our first march in there, you're going to fall on your knees somewhere. It's so big, you can find any spot you want. It is called a blessing zone. And I had permission that I could open the sanctuary to let you go in, so don't, no one, not attorney, nobody leave without going through there. You can come back in here and talk to someone, I'll stay late to keep it open, just so you can talk to an attorney. But before we do that, we are going in the blessing zone, and you're going to lay on your face, sit on your face, get on the altar, and tell God just what this is, because ain't nobody solving but God. I don't care who it is, ain't nobody solving but God. So, we're going to open that door, and be going into the house. You don't have to stay for five minutes, and that's all you want to talk to God about, but when you can go home. Amen? All right, and we'll finish our prayer right over there. Come on, let's go.